Can I please let council know which members of the administration or other offices are present tonight?
Mary Mayan Cathy Caddisaro Perry. She is presently of Webex. Safety Service Director Barbara Celester. Officer Jane Ferraro. Chief Deputy Augur Stephanie Myers. Law Director Justin Richard.
Present.
Chief Counsel Bill Bartos.
Present.
Chief Engineer David Croft. And/or Jason Popil.
Jason's present.
And/or Greg McHugh. But I believe we do have Fred Davis from the Engineering Department.
Morning.
Community Development Director Samantha Walters. Economic Development Director David Maylin.
Present.
Income Tax Budget Director Lori Katikides Boron.
Present.
Oh, I see you. Chief Ed, thank you. Chief Ed is present. Is there anyone from the administration on my head minutes? And we also have President Eisner.
All right, and you've shared with all members except Congressman Slusser are present tonight. Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. We do have one old piece tonight, and that is the redistricting of the ward based on the 2020 federal census. And due to the fact that I'm in the task force session, there's some questions as to how we determine the redistricting, things like that. I do believe somebody from the administration is here tonight to give us an indication. Do you want to come on with that? Good evening. Can you start by just kind of giving counsel the overview of how we've determined the redistricting and what you did that may help us kind of understand this?
Essentially turn on the light.
Yes.
Okay, what I do is I calculated the total population of the city of Massillon. Divided by six, and averaged everyone out on that. Then I calculated how many people were in each ward already based on the census. And then I started moving wards. So essentially, Ward Six was the biggest movement blocks. There is, I can believe, 507 people had moved out of that ward. And redistricted to even out the blocks itself. So the biggest block is the... First one we see, Ward Six, moving over to Ward Five. Want me to show you on that?
Yeah, if you could just point it here. I think we don't have it up there.
So essentially, that's how it was, and then it was rotated around. So that was the biggest block we moved. So once we moved that, we had to keep on moving, even out the wards, all the way through. So Six was too low. So we pulled everything into five and just kept on going around until we didn't have any more wards.
Now, see, if I move both CT and other population in Ward as much as possible?
It's evenly a five. It's still a little bit off, but... You can kind of see that on the bottom of the map, there's a total adjusted population. The goal was to get 5,360 in Ward Four.
So I'm looking at the current population chart that was put together with the districts?
Yes.
And when you're saying the goal was to get to 5,360, how close were you able to get in each one of those? So which end up with like that thing?
So the tool is right there, right next to it on the adjusted population. For example, Ward One now has, by this shift, we have 5,359. Ward Two has 5,361. Ward Three has 5,352. Ward Five, there at five. Five, 5,0347. And Ward Six would have 5,389. The problem is you have it split along by the block. So you're not going to get exact because the blocks just don't go the way it's set.
So you have to move by block, correct? You can't pick five households.
From my understanding, yes, because there is no census. We have information per each household there. They break it down in small, so we got, we have the blocks and then the tracks inside it.
Mr. Lewis and then Mr. ...
And so there's a confusion. The numbers that he was just quoting are on the big map in the bottom right-hand corner. So that's where you have to vote right down here.
And also on the ordinance.
They are in there as well.
Just a couple statements. Those numbers that you stated from the US Census, that is just based on the individuals that returned the census. That may not be an accurate number of the number of individuals in that area. Because I recall just recently Walnut Hills lost some CBD G funding due to the census. It's not that we lost people in Walnut Hills, but the lack of participation with the US Census. Is that correct?
I do not know. I do not that much about the census.
Is there someone from administration that can verify that? So my second concern is in Ward Four. You split Walnut Road, and that's concerning, Molly, because you split a neighborhood. Neighborhood that have homeless associations. I believe the north side went to Ward Three. And then the south side of Walnut remained in Ward Four. Based...
Walnut's not split.
Based on the map, it is split. Yes. And that's a concern because it's way up the...
Oh, exactly. Yeah. And that's more by block. Again, that goes by a block. Because the blocks are that way. The block is split. That's not something that we created. The census track creates the blocks.
So you went counterclockwise, kind of clockwise to move those...
Yes.
...semi-Ward Six. You went counterclockwise. Why did you didn't go, you wouldn't go blockwise?
I mean, no, because of the way that, because of the way that the tracks, because of the way the tracks are working on. That block had the right amount of people. If you go back, I guess I may be wrong.
That's my concern, just really.
That track had the right density, I think, what you're saying.
Yes, for your accident land, it should work with the population. If you don't get that, you don't get that number. You need the whole 500 and some odd people.
I've been thinking about, you know, this came up before, and looking at, and I just don't know what the solution is. Let's say you move things in a different direction in order to keep the line from not being all off, you know? At some point, something's shifting in Ward Four. And at some point, you're going, I mean, even if you're on the southeastmost end towards town, and you start coming in downtown and coming down here, you're still breaking up that part of the ward that's a neighborhood. So unless you give up nothing out of Ward Four, the line's going to be drawn. If you look in Ward Five, where they come down Duncan, that's, that's the heights. That's an historical neighborhood for our community as well. It's getting cut. If you look at Ward Six, where they're cutting, it's literally cutting it right down the side. I'm staying as Ward Six, but my neighbor across the street is now Ward Five. That's in the middle of the neighborhood. So I think every ward is going to have it. There's no, I don't think there's any way around it. We can say, we don't like that people are cut, but that's just going to be in someone else's neighborhood. It's going to be cut somewhere else. So I'm not opposed either way. If we decide we want to protect this particular neighborhood from getting cut and it go up between wards, fine, but someone's going to have to take it. I would also say it doesn't change the fact that they're still a neighborhood. They're still a community. They still can have homeowners and neighborhood associations. This does not affect the ability to do that. All it means is that on the south side, they're going to have Ms. Kramer, and on the north side, they're going to have Mr. Gray. And that's the only difference it affects for them. So I just, I just don't know the answer for it. So I see your points, so I'll fix it.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry. Mr. Worr, if you look at a chunk of Ward Four that's going into Ward Three, and then a chunk of Ward Five that's going into Ward Four, to me, why don't we just keep those two the same? I mean, how much difference is there in population from these sections? We're taking one out or adding one in. What happens if they just stay the same?
I think if I have to look at the numbers, it probably would be to move 500 people out of Ward Six.
That's the problem.
And then Ward Five, maybe you just have to keep moving them.
They're going to have to increase.
Ward Five has to lose something.
Or Ward Six, I'm sorry. Ward Six has to lose 500 and some odd people. And it has to be evenly dispersed essentially. So when you go to your side, on the side there...
Yeah, I can see here, but you're saying approximately 500, these are all approx. Approximately 500 will go out of Ward Six, and approximately 100 or a little more will go into each other four.
Yeah, so you need, in Ward Four example, you need 182 people need to be moved into Ward Four. Where you move them from. You have to move them from somewhere, and it's got to be contiguous.
Yeah, I understand that, but it looks like we're putting, I mean, it looks like we're just kind of shuffling around. We're taking the neighborhood north of Walnut.
You're absolutely right. We are, and the whole thing is, is if I go the other way, you're going to take every, you're going to have to take from Ward Three and move them the other way. So you either move them one way or another way. There's, there's no preference except for it was easier to grab the chunk from Ward Six where I grabbed it and move them around that way. Ward Six is only touching Five and Two.
Let me ask you, can I ask you another question?
Yes.
If you look at the next 10 years, which wards do you see the most new residential housing development?
Ward Six is going to be the most. And then you're going to go to Ward Four.
Ward Four, correct.
To the next most, and Ward Five. The least amount that you're ever going to grow, according to developable land, is One, Two, and Three.
So where, where are you going?
Pretty much One, there's...
You say One, Two, and Three are built out?
Yeah, they're pretty much built out.
So the growth is going to be in the fourth ward and then on the west side.
Four, yeah, the Sixth, the Fifth, and the Fourth. And mainly the Sixth and the Fourth. According to what land is being developed right now.
That's totally reasonable. I guess I'm just looking at what we're moving out of Ward Four, which to me is logical to keep in Ward Four. But then we're putting another, if you're moving some out, we're moving some in. It needs to kind of seem like a wash for those two sections.
It, you're, there haven't been 100 and some people in there. So it's not a wash. They are adding 100 and some people, which is quite...
But even if you kept Ward Four 100 less, it's a high-growth area in the future, we would assume, that there'd be new homes built there and in Six as well.
And I'm just, yeah, you're absolutely right. But I was assuming you're going to have over 450 people in, in 10 years easily. Your Six is, you'll be doing this in another 10 years because the census is tossed out every 10 years.
Sure.
So you're going to increase. So this is all going to happen again in 10 years. So we know we're going to end up, those are going to have to be moved again, and relatively something's going to happen in going to One, Two, and Three. I don't know how, you know, to move them unless you say, let's redistrict everything.
We don't think they have to. Is there somebody that says they have to be identical in numbers?
That I was told.
Or is it just a logical thing?
I think, I was told that. I don't know.
I would like to kind of bounce off of what you're saying there, Mr. Herneke, because I don't know a lot of topics here that you'd be able to help us out a little. If my understanding of the Florida ice code, that we have to do this after each census, within 90 days of October. And then it does say that it has to be re-divided, but we, in the upper section, even if it's distributed possible. We, the law department, they're shaping their ideas. So we have to, we can't do, like, we think the population's going to grow in the next five years. Based on the census, we have to redistrict everyone as even as possible at the time of the census. And it also says, though, with Walnut, people may, might, redistrict at any time. I'll start choosing as well. So if there is a room in population, or it looks as if we have a problem with this at any time.
So I have a question. Based on what? If we can register, redistrict at any time, what is that based on? Because we're registering now based on US Census.
I'm just reading it right now.
Yeah, I guess that's where I think there's a lot of unknowns, and I still have a lot of questions, you know, and this doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Mr. Perry, I'd like, Mr. Greg, that question to you.
You mentioned that you did not use the census integration.
No, we used the census. We used the census blocks. The census, there's blocks that they give us. They have all of the population in each block. And it's a certain, it's a little area. And that's how we developed the whole map, is based on the census blocks for 2020.
But when it was brought up, there was more than likely a large, or a good number anyway, of people that were not counted.
I can only go by what the 2020 census provides. I can't...
So this is the best we can do?
This is, this is what, like, every number reaches, this number of people live in the city of Massillon. I'm not saying it's true, but...
Thank you, Mr. Perry. My question that I think got answered, Mr. Herneke was asking is, I saw, as I think we all noticed, a section of my, of Ward Three that was being removed, and a section that was coming in. And we're thinking, why if we're, if we're having, is that not a wash? And I think your answer was that, net, it still adds to the correct number of my ward.
Right, that's exactly what it did.
And then you...
Had to move that.
Pardon me?
We had to move 500 people all the way from the other side.
And so when you moved the section, blocked the section out of Ward Four, that was too many people.
Well, I had to move, I had to move five, we had to move 500 people out of Six.
Correct.
So if I'm moving 500 people out of Six, well, they have to touch one or four. So then I'm going to have to be keeping one, one, and four. So I have to continuously move people. I can't just grab that 500, you know, and put it over here. They're not going to touch that.
Right, so when you moved in my ward, in Ward Three, out of Ward Four,
Yes.
Was more than 500, right?
Yes, yes.
So you had to take some out on the other end.
Yes, they kept on going around and toe, on the...
So you added to the southern boundary of my ward and took away from the, basically, the northern boundary
Yes.
of my ward. Now, you did, it looked like you still took into account, like, landmarks, you know, streets.
Yes, because that's the way the blocks are, the actual blocks from the census tract are based on streets or, or waterway or...
Right, on the northern border, my, my border was the Rest, was Central Creek and the Resting, and now that's being moved.
I think we moved to Under Hill, Park and Circle.
Yeah.
Sixteen.
Started. So, and that was my question. I was, if you got it, while removing both, but now I understand that you had to move the T, you were putting too, you had to move too many into my ward.
Yeah.
I think Ward Four, correct, right?
To work the whole ward to get into the, because I had to take, I think from Ward One, I had to get so many to Ward Two, so I had to move them. We tried to, not displace the least amount as possible, but the 500 just was a big number. We tried to just be...
Sure. I think you...
Mr. Lewis and then Mr. ...
Well, just to Mr. Greg's point, you noticed the, the transfer from Ward Three to Ward One is about, maybe 115 or so people. But from Ward Four to Ward Three is 200. And Ward Five to Ward Four is, I didn't bother to count that. That's a whole lot of numbers to add up. But I'm sure it's 300 or 400. So that's how we're doing it, you know, they shift the whole big block. That's why geographically, it looks about to be the same size, but population density is not. That, that's where, so add up the numbers and I'll show you.
How was the population of Massillon determined?
It's had, it's all based on the 2020 census. When you see, when you see blocks from the tiger, that tiger census, older shit files. There's a database that's been all together to figure out each block and how many people are going to fly. And then all together and help break it down.
Was there more than one shift determined or to be...
There was a heck of a shift trying, there was a, there was a bunch of different number work you're trying to figure out moved around and then...
And then how did you come up with the final?
They came up with the one shift being the 500 and some odd people out of Ward Five. It's the best one, that one chunk, that was a nice, perfect square to move, and then pull it around. We looked at different possibilities, but still that 500 and some people in Ward Six is the problem.
When you say it was a perfect square, are you looking, I mean, I'm looking at it over here as well, where it's Woodruff and Auburn and
Yes.
Mr. Lewis lives and so forth in there. So if you were looking at a particular area like that, going across the, what would that be, Lincoln Way, also would have been an option for Ward Six as well. So I guess I'm trying to...
Not based on the, not based on the tracks, because you have to go by tracks. So you have to have that number of people in these tracks. So when you start adding up the tracks to get up to that odd 509, it's not the easiest.
I can add, because you're talking about Mayflower Village, and I believe as to be, has the administration requested that no currently seated or candidates be redistrict out of the ward. So if you would have done Mayflower Village, both six ward candidates would have been redistricted out of the ward that they represent.
Was that one of the reasons that you determined this to be appropriate?
I, I'm looking at it. I didn't look at that at first. I'm sure that's probably the fact. But to reach all the way up there would have left a finger. You would have been a little strip and then widened out instead of...
And that's what that happens in Six Ward all the time. So I mean, the whole Six Ward has a lot of fingers, as you were describing.
Yes.
So whether another ward actually had a finger or not, I don't know that that would have been an issue.
Well, you'd have two bits around it, then you would have had a, not, there's not really a lot of fingers as far as like a little strip of ram in a ward then breaks in. So you have two wards on each, they're, they're pretty much straight lines.
I guess it's trying to determine is politics part of what we should be considering when we redistricting?
No, no, it's not politics.
Candidates, candidates is politics. I mean, we're talking about determining a candidate...
No, I understand, but I just want to make it clear, that was just what I was, what the administration had expressed to me. And they did that for everyone that's here. It wasn't about ours or thee. It was about everyone.
No, no, no. I was talking, I was talking party politics. I was talking politics in general as far as we are determining where to, to cut a ward based on a candidate for one particular year when we're going to be in this configuration for 10 years. I guess I'm just trying to understand if that was part of your consideration when...
I was looking at what my consideration, my consideration was looking at the map. Administration, after I took the map, we took it to them, and they placed, I'm sure they placed all the candidates at the time. I'm not sure who made the approval.
And I wasn't saying Republican or Democrat at all. That was not my intent. It was candidate board, he was sitting.
No, I would, they were strictly up and down, depending on blocks and how they worked.
Mr. Richard, patience and waiting, and so Mr. ...
Can I make a quick comment? Fred's exactly right. We asked Fred to do this with no instructions, but just to get it as close as possible. It was a honorable job. There was nothing with regards to where people were. He gave us back the map. We looked at it. We took it to the, and put it to Mr. Lewis about it and to the council. There was no politics lost in any of this.
Mr. Richard?
Just a, a point that was made earlier. We are required at this point after the census, after we have the census results, to, obviously, you can always challenge the morassity of the census, but it is, in fact, they've made their best effort. It's ultimately certified. So those are the numbers that we have for now, and we are required at this point, within 90 days of that, to redistrict. At any time, the Ohio Register of Rights Code allows for a council to, with a vote, to redistrict at any time during those times that we're required to, and also to obligate and/or pay for a census. So we could have our own private census. I'm not sure how much one costs. But those are, of course, be the numbers that we would then rely on to be our own private census. As far as speculative nature, as far as redistricting for the future, how we see land growth or building happening, it's, it's really, the RC is clear that it's about redistricting as where people have been counted and something that can be referenced to, i.e. the US Census or the Nassau Independent Census that we would, you know, either that or we pay for.
Yes, excellent.
I'm just curious as to if we happen to seek quite a bit of growth in the future, what would prevent us from having seven wards versus six ward, wards and still continuing to divide, have additional growth in the community?
I'm not sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you have to give a number. Mr. Greg?
Just one last question, and maybe the law director can speak to us. We heard that redistricting was based on blocks.
Yes.
Tracks.
Blocks. Tracks are a lot of broken blocks.
Where is that, is that written down somewhere? That is a requirement on how to redistrict? Or is that the easiest way to go about?
Or is that the easiest way to go about redistricting?
That is the smallest known number of population that I've ever seen. Without going.
Three by three.
Or without actually going out and doing a new census to get every single household's population. Those are the numbers that are provided to us in the 2020 census, is in blocks. That's the smallest breakdown that they have.
So that's, that's the way we chose to go about it, to obtain that number.
To, to receive that number.
To get that number.
That is, that is a higher amount to get a new census of the city and Massillon.
Okay, so we chose that, that vote, or chose it, by using the blocks. It's not a requirement, but it's the way we chose to do it in a systematic way.
It's the way we chose, it's the way we chose not to hire and do our own census in Massillon.
Correct, thank you.
This, this, Chris, also that's, this way is basically how we do this, we create a block there. That's the thought in that same way.
Well, maybe you can, you can speak to how long the hills lost funding?
I, I, I can't speak. If they lost funding, everything's based on the census data.
Right.
And how that's reported, I mean, that's done by the government, that's what everybody's about the whole country uses, as for population growth, grid lines. But, I mean, Fred, we're just taking the data that is available. I don't think the city wants to go to the expense of creating their own census data for the city. But that, that's the requirement we have to have, and we follow that apart, and Fred's followed that apart. And I, I would repeat, he did a great job, because this is not easy to do, to be honest with you, to put all this stuff together, it's very, totally hard. I know I couldn't do it, but he did a good job.
I agree, and I, thank you, and thanks for answering these questions, because I, you know, I needed a little bit more knowledge and a better understanding of how we went about doing this, because yet it was very, I was very surprised when I saw Walnut Road was split. So I just had a lot of concern of the reasoning behind that, and I think I got right in this question. So thank you.
Great.
Thank you, and well, and obviously, as this being a required action the city council must take based on the federal census, it seems like it is a very delicate balancing act of numbers and very complicated. And I know we're just a big council member and asking for any changes, it seems at this point, I think it would tend to seem as though we're reading, so this would be a concept that very lax meaning of the year. So at this point, anything further on this importance? Mr. Greg.
Mr. Derek, I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with this, because at this point, Fred's gonna have to put this all in ver, like in, you know, I guess points and everything with regards to write it down or in language. So, I mean, if he goes through this, I mean, that's a lot of work to do that, and I hope we don't have any changes.
It doesn't look like anybody is raising their hand, asking Fred specific changes at this point, so I think everybody has a question to ask, satisfied at this point. So if you want to put it down, it's 24 hours, and then we're going to let that take.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And all for you, I'll listen.
Mario? Nothing for me, Mario. Oh, oh. Nothing for me, for me, for me. All right, sorry.
Anything for councilor?
Please provide.
Nothing, please do whatever you want.
Oh, Bill.
Nothing for public facilities.
Rolling.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I do have one, a whole item, ordinance number 1682021. Just regarding the, creating the, amending the, uh, creating this part-time temporary seasonal position of administrative assistant in the Massillon Civil Service Commission and setting the duties and salaries there, there to. We had some discussion on this, forced the first reading, any further discussion? Questions? Mr. Derek?
Yeah, can you fill me again about why I would have to add more? You know.
Add more positions?
Yes.
Uh, we could receive funding through COVID funding to a traditional support from the health department in terms of employees. Some of it had to be used for new employees, some of it was used for existing, to add hours to help supplement what the health department is doing. Other questions? This will be up for second reading. That's me. All right, and I have one, addition, one new item. Please prepare legislation to amend compensation for the position of administrative assistant slash permit assistant within the building department to be compensated in accordance with the city's pay schedule for classified employees. At the request of the Director of Public Service and Safety in the Massillon Civil Service Commission, approve the amended position to the classified service of the City of Massillon on November 8, 2021. Previously, this position had been considered to be unclassified. I think, Jimmy, I'll give you, can you speak to this?
Uh, this is the position that used to be a secretary position, which kind of was changed to administrative assistant. And in essence, what's going on here is that the decision was unclassified prior, it's been classified. So what we're going here is, as you know, there are two different pay scales, well, one's for classified employees, one's for unclassified employees. So we have to move this position to the classified pay scale. Because currently it's an unclassified, does that confuse you?
Yeah.
Okay, I can answer questions, I'll clarify that.
Does that involve a increase, I'm assuming?
Not in this case, because it's a person coming in for that specific position. If they were in the position and we, and the classified position, it would probably create, we, we are dealing with the issue with regards to classified employees who are probably coming forward with more classified employees in these positions. So we're gonna have to have a different, probably, you know, five pay scales, we don't have any answer, any definite answers to that yet.
Can you give us a basic explanation of classified versus unclassified?
Uh, classified, that's, I'm probably not the person to do this, but classified position has certain protections with regards to, and they, they're supposedly cast for those positions under some sort of, and unclassified position would be a more predatory position. A director position, those types of, of leadership positions, I would say.
Mr. Lombardi?
I was looking at her hand up before we.
That was my question, as to what was the difference between classified and unclassified position, please?
Um, what, what is the reason that we want to take this position from unclassified to classified?
Because it, it's statutory, it should probably be classified position based on the criteria, the job description, et cetera. They just haven't, haven't, haven't classified them past, okay? We are looking at a lot of different positions as we speak from that.
Mrs. Kramer?
So which change to the job description? I guess I'd like to see the current job description and an updated job description. If we're going to be changing the title, should be some type of.
Yeah, I don't know if they actually job, I can get you a copy, I don't know, I kind of.
Mr. Ferguson?
Do you want me to go ahead or do we stand here? Do you have a preference?
It's easier.
Okay, I can.
All three questions. Dave was answering them as best he could, and he had classified, unclassified, and that's what we're talking, we're getting about civil service, civil service protection. Classified meaning within a classified civil service of the city, in this case. Unclassified being, un, within the unclassified service, classified service, you have certain protections. You, you can unfire without cause, you go through with it, you know, hearing process. Unclassified, you essentially serve at the pleasure of the appointing authority. As we've been reviewing certain positions that are in our occupation list of class titles, we found that some of them were set as unclassified, that cert, by under law, should probably be considered as classified. There is a law under 124, 111, sets what positions are unclassified, what positions are classified. Positions in the service of the city are classified unless there is an exception otherwise. And we've been going through and reviewing, as positions have been coming up to be refilled or reposted. And it's with complete, you know, overhaul really of our civil service process, the administration, civil service and the law department. We've taken a whole holistic look at this, as I mentioned before, we'll be coming to you with a complete package on this. But certain positions are coming up, and we can't just go without refilling these positions. The question about the change in the duties, I don't believe anything has changed, Dave correctly outlined. The, the theory was that the position of secretary is outdated in some ways, hardly commensurate. And, and so the, the administration tried, decided to change this position to more outdated, more lauded type of administrative assistant slash permit, the one that you see. So there was no change, I believe, in the duties. It was just simply the secretaries and the old term of duties in the past, and they're looking to update those as, as we go. That was the request made, civil service to update that title. As far as the, uh, the unclassified, classified, we can cover that, if there's any other outstanding questions, I'll, I'll answer that. But the pay scale is another thing, I think the administration will call upon you for that as well, because we have a pay, and I know we have another item with the pay scales, but you'll see, we actually set the pay scales based upon classified versus unclassified, which is something I've not seen before, and I've worked at a couple, just all of these government amenities. But that's kind of created a little, bit of a discrepancy. And actually, you ask, you know, does the result of a pay increase? You'll see that, that certain places on the pay scale, the unclassified pay scale is higher than the classified. On other places, it's lower, when we look at the, the years, the one year versus the 30 year. I don't think they actually cross at certain points, the key point being the 10 years mark where they're identical pay, uh, pay numbers. And then all of a sudden they cross. One other point, that I would point out is, for some reason, we have our supervisor positions on our classified, in our classified positions grouped together. Something else we might consider looking at in the future, all things were taken, I'm not looking at right now. But for this particular position, the decision was made that it belonged to the classified service under law. We took the, the, correct steps, the administration made their request to civil service, they've since classified the position. Now, the issue being, we have the positions classified in the classified service as approved by the Civil Service Commission, but listed in the occupation list of class title that has been paid on the unclassified pay scale. And so the auditor receives the, the, you know, the documentation page, the person who has the classified pay scale, still listed on occupation, occupation list of class titles as unclassified, we need that, that documentation updated. And that is set up counseling. Ms. Hernangani?
Thank you, Mr. Greg. So a person in the building department retired, and is the position currently vacant? Or is there a person in that position and we're redoing it?
Mr. Hernangani, I'm not sure if it was retirement or not, I believe that the person has left and they're, they're in the process of filling that position. Do you have any, oh, Lori has any?
I can verify that, yes, it was a retirement in that, that's in the building department, and that position is open to fill that position.
So if the position is open, you want to classify it and then post it and then give the test and follow that whole process, right?
Yes, I believe you give the test and then you, the civil service, don't quote me on this one, but the Civil Service Commission verifies the test and you go through the rest of the process.
Lori, Lori hit that nail on the head. For the classified positions, we have a specific process. It goes through civil service, there's an actual test, civil service will certify the list of the appointing authority, and then the appointing authority will hire them for this. For unclassified hires, usually it's, you know, it could, it can be a, you know, it can be a testing process, it can be a posting process, but unclassified employees can also be hired. I know this person, I think they're doing a job, I'll, I'll hire them in this position. Think of your fiduciary appointees, think of your, you know, your higher level employees that, you know, require a little bit more confidence in the appointing authority. But those are the, you know, serve of the pleasure of appointing authority.
Mr. Greg?
Yes?
I was informed that the mayor, she is out, she's on the webex, and she would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Hi, good evening, members of council. You know, we have corrected quite a few things in the City of Massillon. One of the things that has not been able to be corrected at this point is the classified versus unclassified chart. And the reason that is, has occurred is that we had a part-time moderator for many, many years, and there was not really anyone really to step up and correct this. So we are working with the City of Canton, and with Mr. Bertos, and with Mr. Richards, and your civil service director, and we're going to, we're trying to clean this entire, as Mr. Bertos said, we're going to be bringing the package to you to clean this up, because this is decades and decades, I believe the last time the bill corrected was, I'm wrong, was 1974 or 1979 that this was voted on, years and years and years ago. So we're able to clean this up now, and we're working with Mr. Simon from the City of Canton, with our civil service board, and we're very excited about, this is a multi-area, now that we have, we'll tell law director and the chief counsel that we're able to tackle. So we'll be bringing the entire package, and it will be confusing, but we'll walk you through it, because it's definitely needed to clean this up, and anything that our audience has been involved with the conversation. So I just wanted to let all of you know that, but there's a lot of work to be done, and it's, it's a plan that we're going to be able to tackle this now. Do you have any questions for me?
I see no questions for you, Mayor, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or discussion? Uh, does the auditor have any to add?
No.
Good, all right. All right, this will be on, we'll sign this and put this on agenda for Monday, thank you. And that's all I have, and those are words.
Dane, you can leave me again, please.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor.
Mr. Bruce Howard? Uh, thank you. She wrote something new, but one pending question, I believe we were going to get an update on the crosswalk signage in downtown, in Washington. Long, awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Derek. Yes, I want to see you guys' update on that. First of all, I want to thank you guys for your patience on this. It's really important that we make a decision that's best for the city. And if you have any more questions, anything, so thanks for that. I was able to speak with O-Rat several times in the past couple of weeks. And they had me clear, they did say to me several times, that the current design layout is safe, and they do not recommend that we make any changes. However, you know, because of the concerns of this council, we do take safety very seriously. I am recommended to the administration that we install the flashing yellow lights around the crossing signs on both sides. Going above and beyond, that's recommendation. And we also installed a no turn on red, no turn, no right turn on red, northbound here at Lincoln Way to help increase stop gaps in the even out situation.
Right.
So again, thank you for your patience on that, we wanted to make sure that we got this really good, but that's, that's the direction we're going to go.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Oh, I just have a question. On my way into council this evening, there was a car that was parked in the crosswalk on the sidewalk. So it actually, a little quicker, turned off of the street onto the sidewalk where people are supposed to be standing to go across the sidewalk. Are we?
It really legally parked?
Yes, yes, but that's not the first time I've seen it as, as well. So I'm wondering, is there anything that we can do to? So I'm wondering, is there anything that we can do to prevent that? I mean, I don't know if you put a pole in the center there. If, well, people can still walk around pole to get through the crosswalk, but a car cannot do that. So I guess, I think, again, we're talking safely as a car pulls off and there are people that are supposed to be crossing right there at the mid last crosswalk. And I won't say it happens every day, but this isn't the first time I've seen it, it was just today on my way in here.
Well, I don't know if we can put a hole in there, but we'll definitely, I mean, if we look at it and see what, what we can do to improve it.
So I'm just curious, which side of the street? Smiley side or opposite?
Smiley side.
Anyone that's hearing, that's on the west side? I don't know, it's south by here.
Because that one place we might have put a little hole would be on the, that doesn't address what you're talking about, you say, but it would be on, what would that be? The north side in the alleyway is, what it is, is something to park right in that alleyway, which is also illegal parking. So just bet, you know, how we can leave staff in those situations.
Just by putting a pole there, a car can't go in, but the people can walk around pole to get. Thank you.
Thank you. And one thing too, the south side is now abused with tables and chairs. This originally set up as a temporary, so with that separate standard change, that will again be unusable anyway, so that may be part of reservations also. If even though now, it's just like you said, it's already, like I said, it's just tables and chairs broke off, but it's still a city street which is granted, you know, temporary use.
On a different subject that falls under this, can I have some background information on the reasoning for closing Glenwood Place Southeast from Woodland Avenue Southeast North to the unnamed alley South Pearl Avenue Southeast? Can anyone from the administration give me an explanation on this closing?
I don't, I do not have, if you give me the street again, I'll look into it for you, but I don't have an answer.
Yeah, this document states to authorize and direct the closing of Glenwood Place Southeast from Woodland Avenue Southeast North to the unnamed alley South Pearl Avenue Southeast and to post all necessary signages. There's just no explanation or any reason why.
Did that just come out today?
It came out, there's three different documents, so the other two does have the reason behind these requests, but this one does not.
I don't know for sure if I get, I mean, we are taping right now, could be that, but I can look into it, but I don't have an answer right now.
Perfect, thank you.
And Jason, you might want to check with Jay Johnson. Those came through prior to Sylvester, through the enforcement.
Oh, yeah, with the building, okay. Hey.
Was there supposed to be some sort of development or change in that area? Some of the buildings up there, one or two changes. The gray section is right on there here. Sorry, sorry. All right, we'll move on to finance. The first that appears we have is please appropriate hundred three thousand eight hundred eleven dollars, we need appropriate amounts of the general fund to go to the fire department, new fire equipment. This is to fund the purchase of five Lucas three-point-one CPR assist devices, placed with necessary due to the company manufacturing the Roscu and required accessory equipment. I've seen them happen, they were going out of business. They're no longer able to obtain required accessory equipment rendering the Roscu units unusable. So the Lucas CPR assist is more often in the same level service company provided. After delivery, set up the Lucas systems, the Roscu devices will be sent to trade-in for three thousand dollars per vice or approximately fifteen thousand dollars total of offset in the expense. Do you have a cheap head here? Is there anything like that?
My behalf to answer your questions, but this is something that came out of Lou for us. We had no indication that resuscitation international, the company that manufactures the Roscu chest compression assist device that we currently use was going out of business. A vendor that we used to purchase those received a letter, I guess, back in August because the company closed their doors, came out of business August thirteenth. We were forwarded a copy of that letter in the middle of the rate in September that they were going out of business, so we did have enough of the chest bands as the accessory equipment that allows us to utilize the Roscu for patients that are in cardiac arrest to get us through to about the end of the year. The other aspect of that is once that's done, our Roscues are basically non-functional for us because we can't replace those bands. So the, what we're looking at is replacing those with the Lucas machine. There's only two other options out there. One is the Lucas machine, the other is the Zoll. The Lucas machine is the only one that's American Heart Association guideline compliant, which based on our standing orders here at the Stark County, we have to abide by the Heart Association guidelines. So we're kind of stuck with the Lucas machine going forward to replace that. So it is a little bit more expensive than the Roscu as far as the system itself. One of the things we've been working on in last month, you know, and not last month, was we've been trying to confirm with Stryker, the vendor, vendor manufacturer of the Lucas, the rebates and trade-in values for the Roscues going back. So we are able to reduce the initial expenditure of a hundred three thousand down to eighty-eight thousand, which includes the five minutes that replaces the five Roscu units that we have now, and it also includes the service agreements going forward for next year. But doing this allows us and allows the current act to continue to provide the service that they do, allows us to do it in a more efficient, effective manner, less personnel utilized, and that's in those types of calls as far as cardiac arrest, and allows us to keep another ambulance in service once we get that patient off and wrapped in a hospital. So it is important for us as far as functionality, efficiency, and patient care that we maintain that capability, and right now the only option that we have is the Lucas machines. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Mr. Gray? So the only issue with the existing machines is the bands, you're saying?
Well, right now it's advanced, but if we go forward, what about parts if the machine we have now breaks down?
Yeah.
Would we get parts? Or if we can't repair it, we have no way of replacing it because there's stock manufacturing. Bands, once we're out of bands, we're not longer functioning. So the other option, what we want to do now is we've got a 2021 pricing for the Lucas. If we wait any longer, they've already switched over to 2022 pricing, our price is going to go up, probably up three to four percent is what we're looking at from the 2022 percent for twenty-two dollars. So we do have a quote that's available to us till the middle of December. So we're trying to keep our costs down as much as we possibly can, as well as keep our functionality moving forward at the current level. Thank you.
Couple of questions?
Can we just confirm that this is coming out of the general fund potentially carryover or an into the fire department new fire equipment fund? Is this coming out of?
I see what you're saying. General. I have an auditor. This is eleven hundred general fund. That's what I would advise, just come out. Yes.
Thank you.
Diane, when you break this up, you made sure that's clear in the legislation.
That it's coming from the carryover?
Not the carryover, because the way it's written now, it's just from the operating best front of the general fund, that doesn't say eleven hundred general fund like we would typically see.
So, yeah.
You know, we still can't add that eleven hundred general fund.
Yes, sir.
Want to give them a date, not number?
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you. Our favorite topic tonight, unclassified, classified employees. So we request legislation to authorize and direct our services to safety of the city of Massillon to amend cleaning schedules for unclassified employees to serve the supervisory classified or unclassified, classified employees in miscellaneous schedules for part-time schedules. I'm just still out of pay increases to take effect with the first paid period of twenty-two budget year. Who is here to discuss this? Of course, this is kind of even more, as we come up, we just want to verify that the current budget before this council gives a question.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The current budget that we're reviewing?
Yes.
That the council gives a question?
Yes. And it is also already written in, I think I spoke to everyone before, but that's to accommodate those pay increases, and it isn't the annual thing that we normally do at the end of every year.
And the percentage is?
Three percent.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Gray?
Just to clarify, is this for part-time employees that fall under those titles, unclassified, supervisory, classified, or is the part-time only for the miscellaneous schedule for part-time?
That three percent is, my understanding is for everybody, all employees.
Full-time to the part-time?
Yes.
But the miscellaneous schedule for part-time employees, what is that to mean? Does that include, that includes full-time?
Yes.
And miscellaneous part-time?
Yes.
All right, just need to clarify. Sure, thank you.
Any others? All right, I want to sign this for Monday. We do have a couple of transfers here that we'll go over. First, the fire department wants to reduce salary by thirty thousand dollars, sixteen, thirty thousand sixteen up to thirty-four cents, big putting in account pay and due amount. Also reduce hospital line down, about seven hours, three minutes overtime, and this is to cover for better testing now. Any questions? And then the health department reducing salary by twenty-two hundred, including insurance to align with the budget. All right, all business that we have is our annual discussion on budgets. And we do have to start off, Ms. Jane Ferrer, the auditor of the city of Massillon, to discuss the budget regarding the afternoon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council. It's good to see you, and I thank you for asking me to come and speak with you. Before I get into the budget information, I wanted to just give you a brief update on my background. I want you to know, I sat on city council from two thousand and five through two thousand and seven. I was consul at large. I filled one year of an unexpired term for gentleman, and then I was elected, and then at that point, I went and I ran for auditor in two thousand and eight, and I have been an auditor since then. My term expires about twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, and I can assure you that will be the end of me. So I just wanted to give you a, just a short update on that I sat in your seat and I highly respect and admire what you do. It's not an easy job, and sometimes it's more difficult than others. So the other thing I want to say to you is that my office is always open to all of you. If you have any questions about finances, some of you do call us regularly, and if you do have questions, please don't ever hesitate. I have five employees in my office. Four are full-time, one is upcoming as part-time. And we're always willing to help you in any way. We take care of payroll, we take care of paying all the bills for the city, we have, we take care of fixed assets for the city, anything over five thousand dollars, we have a list, listing of it. We balance the bank every month. We receive in online, we do not take cash in, we have nothing to do with cash, that's the treasurer's job, and we receive it all in from every department in the city, and we make sure that it's going into the proper line item, and if not, we send it back to that department and it's corrected. We, I also have employee benefits under my umbrella, and we take care of all of that. I'm going to tell you some good news about that in a short time here. But, so, all of those things we take care of. So as we did our budget this year, if you look at it, you'll see my budget's down twenty thousand five hundred dollars from last year. So I'm trying to save money. We lost an employee when Debbie Bunk left in April, and so that was one of the reasons that my budget is down. And now you'll see a big adjustment with hospital, dental, PERS, Medicare, all of that is reduced when we reduce our salary on the AM. I am bonded, and there's maybe five others in the city that are bonded, and I am one that is required to be bonded. We did take, and we changed from supplies, materials and postage, we reduced that by a thousand dollars, and we put that up under travel and schooling. The past two years, my people have not been able to go for any kind of continuing education because of the COVID situation, and so this year we're hoping that they're going to be able to go and, they go face-to-face. We've been doing everything through the internet, and it's very difficult when you have to do it that way. The other thing I want you to know is that with all of the COVID money that has come in, that's very restricted, and so we have to be very cautious the way that's spent. We have to make sure that the auditors are in agreement with us the way we spend that money, and so we're very prudent about the way that those expenditures go. I want you to know that the last three years, we have had a perfect audit, and that's not just for my office, that's from the entire city of Massillon. All of these departments are cooperative. I work closely with the administration, and I have a very high regard for our administration, and we all work well together. And so saying that, I wanted to let you know that as of today, we should have a target of about ninety-one point six seven percent for our general fund, and we're at ninety-six point three nine. So we're up, and so that's a good sign. We're coming into year end, in the next two weeks, we'll be asking all departments to reduce their purchase orders, if they have money on a purchase order, we'll ask them to reduce it, and that money will go forward into our carryover balance. I don't want to project what that's going to be, I'm going to leave that to the mayor when she gives her stated city address of her meeting in January. So I don't want to say something that isn't quite true, but we are going to have the carryover, and I hope that you're all happy about that. The last thing I want to share with you is our employee benefits program. We have a wellness program that all the employees in the city are asked to come and do a health check. We had, in twenty-twenty, the city had two hundred employees complete the health check and a hundred and eighty employees completed well-being assessment. That's something you go online and do, and ask, answer some questions about your health and different things. Well, we reached a level two reward for rebate amount. We got a total of hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and ninety-nine cents back. Employees got to reap the benefit of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars, and the city's portion was eighty thousand, seven ninety-one, twenty-three. That was given to all employees in March and April of two thousand twenty-one, which meant that no employee had to pay anything for their insurance benefit. Isn't that wonderful? Yeah, that's a great thing. Then the city just chose at random from Medical Mutual, who is our provider, to receive bonus pool money for our participation with the EL Wellness, they legit set by a lottery, and the money was spent mostly, we got eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents, and that money was.
Do you feel that with the five employees, four full-time and one part-time, that you're able to, um, do everything that you need to do? Are you sufficiently, um, staffed, I guess I'll ask?
I am. And we, uh, that is what I am allowed by the state of Ohio to have.
Okay, so the state of Ohio determines how many employees, that you're able to have. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And I'd like to just wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe holiday, and good night to see you all tonight.
Mr. Richard?
Could I be counsel? Uh, I will spare you by saying the classified and unclassified, other than using it as a segue. Uh, the mayor spoke about when, uh, some of you were here in twenty nineteen, when the law department was, uh, or the law director rather, was voted for a full-time position. Clearly, I'm biased, um, by saying that, but I think that how far we've come, uh, in January of twenty twenty, where we are now, uh, speaks that, and the fact that we've been able to, uh, you know, I'll kind of break this down into two sides, because our office is broken down into two sides. We have the criminal side, uh, which certainly I oversee everything, but that's always been my specialty, that's, uh, where I've got some almost twenty years of experience either law enforcement or, uh, prosecuting cases, or, uh, something that you, in that side. Bill certainly, in the civil side, runs the other half of things. But historically, it hasn't been half and half. It's, uh, at least as far as, uh, going back maybe ten years ago, when we started looking at budget, uh, most of the resources historically have always been, uh, in resources, meaning, you know, when you're running the law department or attorneys, and most of them are all focused on the criminal side, and that's certainly, uh, you know, important. Um, it's always been the reason why I went into the work that I did, uh, is to protect the community, especially one which I live. But I think one that's been neglected for some time has been the civil side of things, and, uh, I think that was, uh, certainly highlighted, uh, when the mayor says something like nineteen seventy-nine was the last time that we actually looked at whether or not, uh, the laws, uh, our law department actually looked at the civil service. Uh, I think that, uh, in the past two years, that we've been able to have some money light built, uh, focus this time on that, um, we've certainly moved a long way. Uh, I will a little bit highlight, uh, briefly, uh, a couple of the good projects that are still worked on. But, uh, first, I want to tell you about what, uh, we've been doing this year. Uh, I've been with the, uh, newly-elected capstone, the prosecuting attorney, and, uh, the past probably six weeks, and we were the first municipal court in Stark County to, uh, and actually made it, uh, Councilwoman Starett, uh, is boots on the ground over there, and what we have got together in a collaborative effort is to streamline a process, but whenever I'm streamlining something, I always went there to get fiscal benefit for the city. And, uh, certainly, my accomplishments that are, that our office has done together, um, I think the three biggest one, uh, three biggest ones, we can point to, um, how we've either saved money for the city or brought in money for the city. So the newest one is the direct indictment process, and what that means is when a person's charged with a felony within either ten days or fourteen, fifteen, uh, when they're not there in custody, they have to have a probable cause hearing. So what that requires is, a lot of times, uh, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm in court, uh, from anywhere from eight-thirty to sometimes past one, and we're running these probable cause hearings. Uh, the probable cause hearing is essentially the same as a, uh, as a grand jury hearing. So essentially, what you're getting into is a duplication effort. Um, if you can run, uh, essentially, one probable cause hearing, uh, as opposed to the other, then you're paying less overtime, you're paying less, uh, subpoenas being delivered by bailiffs, and I can say that we've averaged about five to six, actually, that's probably not right, we've probably averaged ten cases a week since we've been doing this the past six weeks, because even the five or six that we do indict, there's probably another four or five that because of our communication group in our offices, uh, were able to resolve cases that normally would have had law enforcement officers off of the streets, in our courtrooms, certainly not where we want them, and we're paying them, uh, three hours overtime for their collective bargaining agreement. So what we're able to do is get them in, uh, based on communication, sending over, uh, information, and, uh, getting, uh, them in front of Councilwoman Starett to be able to, instead of having a probable cause hearing, uh, and a grand jury hearing, just having that grand jury hearing. And, uh, I, I think once it gets to a higher level, and certainly where I've worked before, um, I think on a county level, uh, at least in Southern County, uh, the savings that were realized were somewhere near north of a million dollars a year. Now, that's, that's, of course, for a whole county, uh, we wouldn't necessarily see those kind of savings, but certainly, anytime that we can keep police officers on the streets and not in courtrooms for something that we can avoid, uh, I think that's a good thing. Uh, secondly, uh, we, I've talked about it before when I'm in front of you, uh, but we did not have all of the municipal law enforcement agencies with us when I first started there as the chief prosecutor in twenty eighteen in January, and then ultimately became the, uh, full-time law director in twenty twenty. That was something that Law Director Spaz and I worked on, uh, she went out and we basically pitched, uh, her and I, and we'd be the chief prosecutor, that certainly, for whatever reason, we didn't know why, they didn't choose Massillon, they were hiring independent contractors to do their prosecution, so, uh, she gets me, uh, to give them a pitch, we were successfully to get some of them, since, uh, the past two years I've been your law director, we had all of them, there are no more, uh, at this point to get, but I, I forget the number, Lori, but it's somewhere around, uh, sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars annually, uh, that we would again go straight to the, uh, general fund, again, for the city. Um, what little, uh, I, I shouldn't minimize that. It did increase, uh, my office's workload, and I will give you that in a minute, but it by no means, um, you know, took away from the quality that we were able to do. We often get letters of accommodation from those law enforcement agencies, uh, that we now represent, uh, about the job that my office is doing for them, and we've actually been offered some of the training. So, uh, it, it's not only building, uh, the name of Massillon, but it's helping with, uh, other jurisdictions within western Stark County, so another great thing. I would say the, the third thing that as far as, uh, being able to money is whenever we go into that backroom, generally, it's a, it's a good thing. Uh, recently, it's been about, uh, resolutions for the opioid settlement, uh, in order for us to, uh, re, uh, compensate some of the money that we've spent, uh, on the opioid crisis that Biden in the future, and, uh, essentially, and it may not seem like a lot now, but the more, and my office has dedicated for many years, um, to getting, uh, the next defendant on the line, I think we've gone through five now, two different bankruptcies and, well, I guess four defendants, we are going to continually, uh, go after that, uh, go after those companies that were responsible and negligent, uh, with prescribing, creating, marketing, uh, uh, this drug that has crippled northeastern Ohio. Specifically, I do want to point out something, just as it goes to the budget, because this is, of course, about the budget. So, uh, the other statutory city, obviously, that's closest to us is Canton, and I look at, uh, their population for their municipal court, and we're just a little under half of that. But as far as starting in twenty eighteen all the way to twenty twenty, and our, our kids' levels have grown, uh, we started out in twenty eighteen at doing, uh, even though we're half of their population, we had eighty percent of their cases. Uh, in twenty nineteen, it went to eighty-seven, uh, twenty twenty stayed about there. So we've risen, uh, almost, we're just ten percent less than the number of cases that Canton Municipal Court, uh, sees every day, which isn't just the city of Canton, it goes all the way up to some counties, so all of those jurisdictions, uh, but yet, at almost ninety percent of their workload, uh, our budget is thirty-five percent of theirs. So, uh, I guess I say that when, um, now I ask for money. Uh, it's not, the good thing is, I look back at past budgets, and in, uh, twenty twelve and twenty eleven, uh, there was the amount of, uh, sales services and contracts under, uh, the twenty-three nine-two underneath our, our subsection there. And, uh, we, uh, last year, uh, requested to receive ten thousand, we're asking this year for an additional fifteen thousand. There are a couple of easy to do that. Uh, one is that increasing caseload, uh, we are looking at, uh, possibly, uh, unfortunately, we're losing, our civil department only exists of Mr. Bartosz and another individual who'll be leaving, uh, who is, uh, moving on to grow his private practice. So we're going to be down to one person in civil, and so something that, that both Mr. Bartosz and I considered was hiring outside counsel for particular jobs, and that would go under this, uh, services and contracts. Back to twenty eleven, uh, that was actually an amount, twenty-five thousand, uh, by counsel, that was granted for the services and contracts. Uh, at some point, we, we downed it back because we couldn't necessarily justify what that would be stepped forward, um, however, we think that, uh, what we did this year, we had, uh, some extra money because we are transitioning our, our law intern program, and so we did not have a law intern for the majority of this year, and so with that extra money, we were able to take that salary through a transfer, and we essentially were able to farm out, um, some individual projects, uh, that would have taken, uh, a lot of time and sometimes, uh, maybe the resources that we didn't have, and, uh, we've, uh, been able to pay, um, essentially close to what we're asking, about fifteen thousand, so, um, we would like to have that again because we like to have that option, uh, it certainly does allow for us to, to do that, and then if we do, uh, ultimately find another part-time, uh, civil attorney, that would be great, but if not, you may see us come back in front of you or ask for a transfer to be able to maybe increase those side contracts. Um, just a couple of projects, speaking of what the civil, uh, department has done. Uh, you, of course, you remember the Dalton Bridge matter, we had, uh, Hornstaff matter, the appropriations for Wales Road Project, uh, that was fifteen different probate courses that we did not completely in-house. Uh, the town plaza mural matter, we did completely in-house. Uh, Leboi Project Matter, the Hoseel Arkenhead Matter, the Huth Ready Mix, uh, we played either an essential role or did it in-house with the exception of a small special counsel hearing, uh, which we ultimately put a four out of our budget. Uh, I mentioned the national opioid litigation, and we also, uh, built, uh, almost single-handedly, maybe with, uh, Gary, uh, Attorney Frye, who's leaving, uh, authored the issue one, the Street Product Income Act, uh, that was successfully passed. So, uh, that's a little bit about us, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, um, there's a lot. So a quick question first off, your election cycle, the one you just had, that wasn't a special of your regular time?
No, that was, uh, the unexpired.
Unexpired. So then what is the justification for your personal, um, increase in that?
I'll own that.
You have elected officials, you can't do that.
I'll own that. I, I was under the impression that that was his cycle, so that's something you can take out of there because that was passed that every four, wherever your, you can have that to your new cycle date, so I will own that piece I put that in.
So that will hopefully go back to the eighty-four and nine-nine?
Yes, yes.
I just bent my ass first, on your cycle?
Clearly, clearly, I'm, I'm, I'm always, that's why, uh, when, uh, being a prosecutor, uh, it's pretty easy, if somebody brings you money, you don't take it. Uh, so I, I generally stay away from it, build, build us, uh, those guys to pass your best.
Since that is already written into the budget, my suggestion would be to put that in services and contracts, because if we are looking to either, you know, the process replaces Mr. Frye, or we, that takes a while, then that might be something we'd have to source that for, some things that he helps us, but, so.
All right, so then, the other question is, you're, you're saying that you have increased your salary and, and, um, benefits, you potentially have another higher, is that correct?
No, I have not. Um, they, that was not contemplated at all.
So that's just the three percent is the?
Correct.
Okay, so three hundred and one to four twenty is your three percent increase for your employees. Is that correct?
Again, I, I would defer, um, to one of the.
I'm just, I'm just trying to see, because we have overall three percent increase in your department, which is exceeding what other departments are doing.
Notes from my budget, um, and correcting, I may be incorrect, um, the law department is that we were looking to put a thirty-hour employee on this, the more or less the service side, not the attorney side.
That is correct. We, we've essentially phased out the idea of, uh, of an intern at this time, uh, it came too transient, we were trading interns, I think the whole was a great program that allows them to get, uh, experience, it ultimately, uh, wasn't beneficial for, for Massillon. So we did ask that we take the majority or all of the money that had been earmarked previously for an intern and then increase it to a thirty-hour employee.
That is what I have to do.
So where did the intern's money come from before? Did it come from general fund or another council?
No, it was, it was actually in the law department's budget in the staff.
So we see an increase because some of the thirty-hour employees already covered their intern, intern, and the rest is?
It's the difference, yes.
All right, so, I'm just trying to see what that's, thirty-nine. So some of this increase, that some of this twenty-six thousand dollar, or what is this, twenty-nine thousand dollar increase, some of it is a three percent for all employees, is that correct?
Correct.
And some of it is the increase of an intern, changing an intern into a new thirty-hour employee?
Correct.
Which would, would that thirty-hour employee then qualify for benefits?
Yes.
Is that your intention, having qualified for benefits?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why we see the, the law qualify. All right, I'll, I'll let anybody else ask questions, I won't do it right now. Ms. Lewis?
I guess I would agree with Lori, um, by putting that additional twenty-five hundred into services and contracts as well. Um, it's not much money, and it's already in the budget, I think that's the back of readjusting the entire budget based on that, twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, Mr. Richard, I'd just like to commend you on the job that you've done over the last couple of years, especially in terms of contracting with the other entities in western Stark County, uh, and being able to increase revenue within that department while, um, also, um, I think improving a lot of processes within that department.
Okay, you know, I'll tell you why I'm hesitant on asking a lot of questions, and this is, has nothing to do with, if the job, but I do know that the increase of the other municipal districts, that was the justification of going from part-time to a full-time law director. So we went from fifty-five thousand dollar a year law director to an eighty-five, that costs us to be thirty thousand dollars up. So I appreciate you doing, and I appreciate that it's increased your value, but we, as a council, already compensated this department for that increased value. Um, so, but then, I'd like to, I guess. uh, and being able to increase revenue within that department while also um, I think improving a lot of processes within that department.
Okay, the only, I'll tell you why I'm hesitant, I'm asking a lot of questions. And if this is, has nothing to do with the, the job you've done. But I do know that the increase of the other municipal districts, that was the justification of going from part-time to a full-time law director. So we went from fifty-five thousand dollar a year law director to an eighty-five, like that cost the city thirty thousand dollars or so. So I appreciate you doing it. And I appreciate that it's increased through value. But we, as a council, already compensated this department for that increased value. Um, so, but then, I, I'd like you, I guess, I was really concerned by you trying to hire another attorney and went through and said, that's not what's happening here, is replacing an intern for an attorney, and there's a, a little more cost to that. Uh, so I really don't know how much more to add. I probably have some thoughts and some phone call we made just in case they're cut for cake, should, was that part of the process?
Congressman Lewis, just to uh, follow up on that. Certainly, that is the, again, the reason that it separated with criminal and civil. Uh, if you have a part-time uh, civil uh, uh, attorney, which essentially, prior to this, was the law director. Now by having a full-time uh, you have a full-time civil attorney as well. And I guess that that's, it was kind of a mis-point by me earlier. But as we have focused historically on uh, the safety, um, we haven't focused that much on uh, the other aspects. And I guess those increased lawsuits that we have had to handle, that if we had a full-time uh, law director, or if you look at it as now both having a full-time uh, chief counsel and chief prosecutor, um, not only are you having to increase, you said that obviously it was taken into consideration that because of the uh, criminal cases have been increased, so you need a full-time law director. Well, I would say that we had our civil cases increased, and ultimately, it comes down to representation uh, for the uh, council because ultimately, you uh, are represented by the, the law department as well. So I, I think that a lot of this uh, has allowed, in my sense of this, the, the full-time law directors allow for us to concentrate more on the individual elected officials and ultimately, representation of this council. Uh, certainly, the council's biggest threat or concern is, at any time, should be uh, contract liability. Um, that can't be represented in how many criminal cases there are. So um, I think that you, you enjoyed a benefit, or the city of Maslin enjoyed a benefit when they did choose to move to a full-time law director because ultimately, you're getting a full-time chief counsel, which you have never had before.
Thank you. You know, of course, there's nothing directly with the law department. This is something that, you know, I try to keep a historical eye on. You know, we, we have eight percent this year. A couple of years back, it was eight percent as well when we went to it. So now you're over the, the past two, three, four years ago, looking at being close to twenty. And it's not just the law department, I'm also looking at the courts as well. I mean, this year, the, the bailiff is having a ten and a half percent increase, but it's a hundred thousand dollars, they want to increase their budget by. Municipal courts, three and a half percent, clerk courts, five percent. So we're seeing everything in the legal world. And I know you can't speak to those, but I'm just, it's, it's, I find it weird. Like, what is it in the legal world that's causing this need now? You've justified yours, and we have to ask the judge and, and, and Mr. Meyer for justification of ours.
I, thank you, right? I would just add, um, certainly uh, we have tried to offset it by bringing in uh, now in the past two years, like I said, over sixty thousand dollars. Um, if you look at that increase, um, that, that, that may be exactly, you know, what that is. So uh, nor are we asking to be compensated by our budget directly for whatever increase we brought in or have in the past. Um, we do believe it'll, it's at least something to consider.
Do you want to ask any questions? Ms. Levin?
I just have a comment. I think um, times have changed. When we had a part-time law director and uh, my opinion was we needed a full-time law director long before we voted to uh, to have one. I think that people will sue anyone for anything, anytime. And I know that having a full-time law director has made me feel um, more protected. And I'll say me as a citizen of Maslin, me as a council member, um, and the, the city in general, being represented by a full-time law director as well as a chief counsel um, as well. So I will just say that although I, I think that eight percent is, is maybe more than other um, departments have requested for the increase from year to year, but I think in the legal sense, it is definitely more active, in, in my opinion. I think that we all have to um, look at if something even more catastrophic occurs than, than we have seen in the past, we need to be represented, and we need to be represented internally by well-qualified attorneys. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard.
Thank you, Council.
Ms. Cavan, you can use more.
Okay, open up, turn your questions, anything I might have? I do want to add to the, to the law department. We do give twenty-five thousand dollars, that goes, um, we budget for that because it ends in the twelve thirty-six account. It does come in to supplement um, some of the law department's salary. Uh, but when we do do the salary piece for the budget, we have to write the whole amount in because that is, we have not received that yet, so. Just want to clarify that.
Do you ever know the departments that are wanting to speak tonight?
Yeah.
Does anyone have any general discussion or conversation regarding the budget? Our intention at this time would be, at Monday, would be to table this until the last meeting. So we can have another meeting, and I'll talk to you and just kind of meet in the morning, see if there's any other uh, departments that we want to have come in and discussion. Uh, any other kind of questions you guys have, please give it to her. Uh, if you guys do want to have anybody from the courts come in, I'll be more than welcome. I'll be um, more than willing to be down to them. Um, in the past, when they've asked for increases that, a lot of ours in other departments, they, you know, they will answer questions, but they also actually might as well say it's court order. Uh, and, and they address that, so, yes, Ms. Levin.
I have one more question. In general, the entire budget has increased what percent from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two?
I have to take a look at that, Ms. Levin, I don't have that number right at the top of mine. Um, and, but I can, you take a look, we gotta get that back.
I would like to know that, thank you.
I do want to, just one other thing, not pertaining to the budget, but I do want to, um, I just, I took a peek before I came in today, and I think the cap election is looking very good here today. I would guess it could be around fourteen percent. For the sheer size, just want to let everybody know that as well.
It looks like, this document, if I'm reading correctly, just that it looks like we initially bought the twenty-two million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, sixteen, thirty dollars. It ended up with the add-ons, if we've understood up to here, twenty-five million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents. With this current legislature, twenty-seven, yes, it's separate?
Have we had the split legislation yet?
We don't need it.
Wouldn't we have any more?
Yeah, we've been handling this last year since it's not increasing. Now, if we want to increase it, we can. Um, but the, to make the initial plan, the, the last, the, that last plan increase was two percent. We are at the ninety-three, seven, correct?
Ninety, no. We're at ninety-four, six.
Ninety-four, six.
I do have a notation now in um, for next year at this time, to take a look at that. Um, actually, Stephanie and I talked about that. Uh, if we were not coming out of COVID here, that might have been a discussion that we have. But twenty-two is still in my eyes, a little bit of um, a mystery. We're not quite sure how that's going to be, so we left it alone for this next year as well.
Yes, no, we would have it.
So I was just wondering, like, maybe Jill and I, do we talk about the split this year or not? So we have, we're, we're seeing.
Yeah, we've got a little discussion. All right, thank you. And that is all we have to see. If you're a little.